Okay, I'm hoping to get into the discussion. I'd like to read this recapture to the official record for the public hearing for the fiscal year of 2020 to 2021, which began May 1st, 2020. The total expenditures in amount appropriated for the municipal salt fund shall be thirteen million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And the following is broken down within the draft budget, which was posted by the village in accordance with the law as follows. Administration, one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand and twenty dollars. Electoral officials, one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Public grounds and buildings, a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Streets, fourteen thousand. Police department, three million, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. I'm sorry, three million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. Fire department, five hundred and five, five hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Emergency services and disaster, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Cars and break playgrounds, seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Audit, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Insurance, four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Motor fuel and tax fund, four hundred and ninety-three thousand. Drug seizure fund, eighty-five thousand dollars. Water fund, one million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. Sewer fund, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Utility tax fund, one hundred and fifteen thousand and eighty-four dollars. City B C and I H D A out of grant, seventy-five thousand dollars. Tip two fund, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Tip three fund, three million, four hundred and nineteen thousand and eighty-four dollars. And tip four fund, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two. Okay, at this time, I'll invite members of the public who wish to enter into conference for the record with respect of the village appropriation and budget to come forward. Yes, station A, for her. Where you did that mic not work? Yeah, I was just saying the mic's not working properly on the thing. Go ahead.
I've got one quick question. If it is like we had a break at all, could we have a copy of that to do that?
Sure.
Not that I would be, I have any doubt about that, but that's all, thank you.
Okay, I will see what comes up to the mic, so we're gonna have the treasurer as the two things he wants to bring for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, our resident. I want to make a slight correction to those stated by the mayor regarding the F Y twenty-one appropriation. The actual number, especially those that have copies, is thirteen million, six hundred and seven one thousand and one dollars. What was discovered today, I made a mistake and double counted individuals in the administration department, part-time workers, to a tune of fifty thousand dollars. So that brought the overall property expenses down. So that's one of the changes that was not on the original proportion to that set out for review. So the actual total appropriation for F Y twenty-one is thirteen thousand, six seventy-one and one dollar.
Thirteen million.
We, I'm sorry, thirteen million, yes, thirteen million. The other thing that, for those that have a copy of the budget, you will see that the last page relates to transfers. We've always done transfers throughout the municipality for different reasons. Transferring back to the general fund. This year is roughly a total of two million, two hundred and five thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars, of which four hundred thousand is coming out of the water fund, two hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly is coming out of the reserve. Apparently, we're in the process of getting some expenses that relate to COVID reimbursed back to the village. The max we can give back is five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. If we get a portion or a good portion of that money back, that would lessen the burden that we have to transfer money from the water fund. Going forward, like we did last year, the transfer of the water fund that you see with four hundred thousand and two hundred and twenty-five thousand on the reserve, that one likely would not be touched until probably March or February, March of next year. So hopefully, once we get the COVID, COVID reimbursement money, we won't have to touch the water funds or any reserve at that time. But I just want to make you all aware that even though it's in the budget to potentially be used for operation expense in the general fund, hopefully, we will not have to touch it if we do it with very small amounts. But that will be provided throughout the year from the finance, through finance director, when and if necessary to give permission to transfer those funds. That's all I have, Mayor.
Again, I'll ask if there are any questions from the public of the comment. Okay, because I understand what you're saying, we did ours. But if you have a question for him, please go ahead.
Could you use the mic, please? It's new, she didn't know. Mr. Finch, when you go back over the, what you said about four hundred thousand dollars, about four hundred thousand dollars, can you repeat that?
To overall balance the general fund for F Y twenty-one, there's six hundred and six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar gap, deficit of the general fund. To cover that gap, the plan is to take four hundred thousand dollars out of the water fund and two hundred and twenty-five thousand out of the current reserve fund, funds that we have now at the bank.
At the reserve?
Yes, with the anticipated money we're getting back for, because we're going to the COVID expenses, most of that six hundred and twenty-five thousand will not be needed. Hopefully, we get majority of reimbursement back by the end of December. The four hundred thousand I spoke of, as well as the two hundred and twenty-five, that proper money probably will not be needed until the end of fourth quarter next year, which is, I can say, February and March.
Okay, won't be until February and March. And I have some specific questions, specific questions about something that's in the budget. Do we ask that here, or when is that, when we ask the question about budget?
Just a couple of weeks, a couple of days done. Weeks prior, we had the, this is supposed to be a public hearing, so we have time. So I'm just saying, now, usually, this is just for the public. We had time to go back and forth with the treasurer, but I will head along because this was supposed to be taken care of, and we just relayed what we have, what we've gone over. When I said it's too hungry, now I'm asking them if they have any question, but, okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Finch, I'm gonna say it's on page six, well, no, I'm sorry, it's page nine. I don't recall, you know, I didn't take notes on everything, but we have a line item here for a school officer for fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Is that something?
That, that's the question for police chief. Officer been over at the school that we have to pay part of that salary. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent split, but the school just picked up seventy-five percent of the salary and benefits.
That's what I need to know. Secondly, is, um, I have another question. Now, on the last page where it says bonds and loans, and this is where it says the three, three hundred and seventy thousand dollar real estate tax, that's the line of credit that's gonna be, that's the line you were talking about, we're not gonna use for something, or?
No, that's, we have a line of credit of five hundred thousand, and then we also have money that we set aside in the CD. The line of credit we can use, so we do have to draw it down and be part of the two hundred and twenty-five.
Oh, okay, so that's part of that, okay. And also, I think this will be the last question, as I know you, we had, we have a big discussions about the job descriptions and the position description, but on the page, the very first one, when we put in ninety thousand dollars for the director of finance, okay? I do believe that's wrong, it should be forty-five thousand, because she's not here full year. And I don't see any place where they put in your salary for the time that you spent here. So, but it's simply, in fact, it's on page ten. So I'm wondering, if I'm not mistaken, according to what, the attorney said that you have to have a line item in there for your, for the interim director, that should be included, and the director of finance salary should be forty-five thousand. It should be included, they say it has to be according to state statute, but it's not included in, on this budget. Well, it should be separated and be identified as a separate item. So it's on page ten, where there's something said director of finance. Now, this is what I'm getting from the attorneys, where they said that it has to be specified on who's getting paid what, and if I'm not mistaken, this finance director, because she's only here for the half of the year, that she's, it shouldn't be, that you have to put your line item in there too and put your salary in there. Now, this is what I understand, that there's something different. Let me know, because we're in the midst of doing these job descriptions, which we know have to be approved before we do this budget.
The ninety thousand with director of finance deposition does improve my salary from the beginning of the year. To a degree, I disagree with the attorney as far as interim finance director having to be a line item. I've never seen it in the budget. He's correct that line item duty can be approved, and for the most part, do have to have an ordinance. But regarding my salary, it's under the director of finance, that expense line item. So technically, it is counted for part of the ninety thousand that started this May through April of next year.
I, I'm agree, I'm agreement with the amount, but it says it has to be specified in the budget. You have to have your, you know, interim finance director in there and how much it costs.
We can separate it.
Okay, but that's, that's the way it's, you know, according to the attorney, so we need to follow this lead.
Attorney, I think he's wrong.
Huh?
Unfortunately, on that one about interim finance being awarded or anything like that, I think it was wrong. Now, as far as breaking it out, it's just a matter of semantics. So, if one broken out, it says interim finance director, that's fine, and that's, that's not a big issue.
Okay, so, then we can get that broken out, and also, can we have page numbers on, on these, you know, hours as you had, I stayed so long as I'm at the age. But those are the few questions that I need to answer, and I don't know, what is your take on these? Do you have any, a take on these job descriptions that have to be approved before the budget is going?
I think the only one that needs to be approved is the director of finance. I don't think anybody that's not in the department here needs, needs an ordinance. Because if you start going there, then you need an ordinance for public, for part-time workers, you need an ordinance for temporary workers, now you get into more unnecessary expenses. And then, if you have staff members that have ordinance, what happened to change job titles? I know last year, we discussed changing one particular job title. So when we go back to the attorney, so we do another ordinance for the job title change, that's extra money. So I just think it should be pertaining to those titles that are within the state statute in the department heads.
Well, you know, I understand your dilemma, but you gotta understand ours too. We have to follow, you know, vote in our best interest, you know, according to what the attorney told us. And if he, in his opinion that we need this, I think it needs to be changed, and also, we need to get to going with these job descriptions right away. So that's in my comment.
Okay, round four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're talking about what's in the job descriptions and recommendations from our attorney, I submitted, after I was looking at correspondence between you guys, I submitted to the attorney a question, and I asked him to show me explicitly where it states that we need an ordinance for every job duty that we have here. He did not, he was not able, I can't say he was not able, I would say he did not submit that. So sometimes, our attorney can err on the side of what the desires of our trustees are. But just because he does that does not make that law, and that's the piece that we have to research. So as we look at making certain that we're going due diligence, as, as you all are in terms of being trustees, then I'm going to still, what do I keep saying? If everything should not have to be fed to you, this is not a cookbook where all the directions are there for you. Sometimes, as our leaders and our officials who are representing the village of Salt Village, you must do your own research if it's not being given to you. I asked for it, because I've never seen it. So I thought maybe he reported someplace that I maybe had omitted, but he did not. So now, it's up for this board to decide where does it say in code and your ordinance is that for every position that you have, that you're going to need an ordinance. I invite you to do that as you continue to move forward.
Mr. Mayor? I'll say you're on the way.
Thank you, I just have one question, whenever we're gonna pass this budget?
Mic, please.
I just have one question, whenever we're gonna pass this budget?
As soon as we, as soon as we board, I was told that the board didn't want to pass until we ordinance with vote on, so, so that is discussed. The vote on, hopefully, we'll have that done by second week in October, or second Tuesday, October.
Well, if you would, Mr. Mayor, yes, I understand that there were some ordinance that just recently got brought into this discussion, and I actually asked that that ordinance be presented at a five-thirty meeting today, so we could move forward with passing the budget. I don't want to wait till the middle of October to pass this budget. If it's only simply a matter of an ordinance, then I think we should pass the ordinance and pass this budget. There's a lot of people that are waiting for past retro pay and other things. I am not, I thought we were gonna pass this budget today. This is a paper budget, things could change. Any ordinance that was needed could have been done even after the fact. We've had a finance director for sixty-three years. I don't see why I went and waited two weeks to have finance director. I was really hoping to pass this budget today. So I am not in favor of waiting till the middle of October to pass the budget, that's just me.
Okay, well, it was told to me that the budget would not be passed, we were voting on unless the ordinance was approved, ordinance has to be talked about, written, and absolutely right. I would, trustee, since two thousand and six, I've never seen an ordinance or anything like that for that reason, so. But now, the way it is, if you want to have a special meeting to do that, that's the only way you're gonna be able to do it before October, second Tuesday.
It was never discussed that we needed to have an ordinance, it was never discussed.
I was told to me.
Okay, I was told to you, but the other trustees were ready to move forward. We were ready to move forward.
They were told to me that the trustee would not entertain that until that ordinance.
There's six trustees.
Okay, I'm just saying, we were told.
Question, are the, what is this, ready? Because I've never seen it, so are they, are they, are they ready?
We've now discussed it.
But are they ready?
I've never seen it all. I've never seen it all.
Can I make a suggestion? Like you just alluded to, Mayor, and Trustee Williams, your position has been in the budget several years. Passing the budget tonight doesn't change the fact that we have people in our position. Why can't it? Well, never mind. But my, my, my question, my comment was, if it was on the agenda, pass it tonight and then do the ordinance later, whatever got modified, because we have people working. It's not like you're saying, we're not gonna pay these people anymore. It's just, it's, again, it's semantics on what's right, what's proper, like Matt just said. We still gotta do research, I don't think staff members need to be in ordinance. I, I just find it unfortunate that here we are again at the eleventh hour, making another change. And the person that recommended, whether it's attorney or trustee, been here for the last four months, and this is the first time it's coming up, so it's not fair to the employees that's gonna have to wait to get paid, because none's been paid until this budget's passed, so that's my comment.
Okay, right now, we're dealing with this public hearing. And if there's anything else, any questions about the budget from the public? This is what this is about, not just going back and forth on something that, you know, was talked about, and it was told to me that, you know, we needed to do this, this, and this. So that, I did take it upon myself not to do that, it was told to me that we needed an ordinance, and without that ordinance, then the board wouldn't vote on it. So the lawyers did tell me that they, that there was ordinance needed, and I asked the same question that the board asked, show me where it states that that, you have to have an ordinance for that particular position, for that particular position to put into the budget to vote on. And with that being said, I'll.
We're not gonna have any more discussions about this matter?
Not about this, ma'am, we can, it's just about, we're, we're, and right now, we're going off topic. Right now, we're supposed to be, the, if they have any questions about the budget itself, this is a public hearing for the audience, not for the trustee to go back and forth. We had our time, when you, when we were going back and forth about different items on the budget, because we can stay here or, you know. So instead of probably doing that back and forth, but right now, staying on topic, we're supposed to be allowing the public, if they have any questions about the budget, to speak on it. We did that, because of any questions?
Did I ask a question I didn't think up before?
You didn't hear me when I said a question?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
In plain English, in plain English, could you tell us what is holding up the budget? Plain English, how much longer does it take to say gay or nay? You've got it all down here in black and white, the budget needs to be passed. How much longer are you gonna pussyfoot around this thing? Let's get it passed, if you've got employees not getting paid, they need to get paid. So what's dragging their feet? Time to get it done. That's right.
As I stated?
As he stated.
As I said, yes, as I said, as I stated before, it was told to me by the lawyers and trustees that they wanted to have an ordinance for positions, the multiple positions for public, for a finance director, I think of another one, for community development director, and I'm not sure if it's. Oh, yeah, assistant, finance director, and then the fire administrator, I'm sorry, the chief of administration, then the fire department. So they wanted, that, that's what was told to me by the lawyers, that those ordinances, without those ordinances, ordinances, we couldn't pass the budget. Financially, we just can't throw ordinances in there, but therefore, they have to be comprised and board the board to talk about it. All this was told to me in, in the last week, I think it was Thursday or Friday. When we didn't have all that, it was suggested that we rush, or not rush, but go ahead and do that without the budget, that that was the case, and we wanted to broaden. Why, I'm not making this up, why was it broad that we weren't going to pass the budget until such time, then the ordinance would be passed and voted on? So right now, it's not a matter of somebody bowling it up, this is what was told to me by the lawyers. I asked the lawyers again to show me where it says, whatever code book they wanna go with, where we have to have these ordinances to pass a budget. I have yet to have that, so right now, we're waiting to get a ordinance, to talk about it, to discuss it, and then financial board. And then, once that is taken care of, I understand that we can go ahead and pass the budget. I, I'm like you, Tom, it's how it's mine, was old enough, but that's what was told to me, I'm only going by that. I'm not a lawyer, so I can not tell.
Was it, I mean, Mr. Mayor, was it a trustee, a trustee, or a trustee?
It was told to me the trustees.
Did we do a consensus?
Pardon me? No, I didn't do a consensus.
Have we moved consensus?
It doesn't matter now, we can't pass it now anyway. Are you, a, a fifth Tuesday? That's, that's next Tuesday, the fifth Tuesday. So if this board wants to have a board meeting on the fifth Tuesday, but here's, here's my problem. You have to have an ordinance first, so you wanna have an ordinance before a, a committee type meeting, and then at a board for the regular meeting to vote on?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I can't, oh, okay, I saw, and that's the problem happening, you're saying, yes.
So the clerk is shaking, I had no one to trust.
I'm, 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 okay, but I, you're gonna say before you run trustee, you're one trustee. I'm asking the trustees now, and I'll ask, and I'll say, I'll say it again. Do you wanna have a special meeting next Tuesday for the ordinance to discuss it? First of all, they want to have it discussed and asked to be written, because I'm gonna see what this is gonna be myself, because like I said, I've never seen anything, so I'm. And, and the question is, what position are we talking about? Because I don't understand why is all of a sudden now, this is a, 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 a point, and all these years, finance director has never had ordinance for that, and that's what, that's what you're not trying to figure out.
I, I was talking about appropriation.
No, no, appropriation ordinance is done after you vote the...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, no, that's, that's what, like, I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about...
Like, like Mr. Fitz said, we had a finance director for sixteen years.
Well, that's what was said, that they, the lawyers told, made a statement that they have to have ordinance for a position that's, uh, only in the budget, before the, the budget is passed, as the lawyer said. Trustee Ty.
Okay, first of all, when you say they, you're talking about trustees, I'm not aware of this ordinance, and we had to do this ordinance, I want to see a special meeting, let's see if this budget passes, we've already agreed on it, we have no more discussion about the budget, and if we have to put an ordinance in place, you do it after the budget, just like you mentioned, the budget, so, I'm not, I don't know what it is with this ordinance, because we've always had a finance director, we've had different positions, and never had to have it.
Did you, okay, did, were you aware, okay, were you told that ordinance had to be put in place?
I don't understand.
Were you were told by the lawyers?
I was not told by the lawyers.
Who you were told, who were you told?
No, what you're just saying.
Okay, this is the first time you heard about it? This is the first time you heard about it?
That they needed an ordinance to, for the finance director.
No, come on, this, this is the first time you heard that an ordinance has to be passed before the budget is?
I, I don't know if it, that it had to be passed before we did the budget, I know there was talk about ordinance, I'd seen some correspondence on you, my thing is, pass the budget, I don't see why we have to have an ordinance.
I don't either, but that's what...
But I want you to understand when you say they, you're talking about the trustees, I was not aware this is holding up the budget.
This was, so this was told to me.
So, I, I wish you would have reached out to the trustees on Friday, saying, this is what I've been doing.
I thought, the, the way I was brought to me, the, you know, if that was the case, I thought the trustees already had said that they, because that's the...
The trustees never had.
No, they, they already talked to the lawyers, the lawyers were the ones that told me that without this, we can't vote on it, and that's what the trustees were.
Well, can we please just have a special meeting to pass this budget, and not wait till October?
So, in other words, you don't, you don't want a ordinance?
We can do it after, if that's what's required.
If it's required, then...
If it's required.
Okay, so we're going to be in the wrong case?
I will say first, no, give us, uh, your word.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, according to this, uh, and I think everybody got it, because it says, uh, President, uh, Murges and the Board of Trustees, dated September eighth, where it indicates that all the appointed officers, uh, have to be, uh, that the, according to the statute, they have, when they're created, it has to be done by ordinance. Now, as you know, since May of 2017, uh, positions have been put in place without the vice considered of, uh, board, so, uh, anyway, uh, excuse, Mr. Mayor, I got the floor, will you please let me say what I got to say?
Mr. Mayor, you're speaking.
Will you please let me say what I got to say? Okay, so, according to this memo that we got, that you have to have an ordinance, and it, and it is a clarified state statute when we, when we reading this, and it also, uh, outlined the different, uh, positions that's already, uh, here on board. Now, there's a couple of positions here in, in this budget, and since 2017, have been appointed without the vice considered of the board. Uh, uh, according to this memo, dated September eighth, they have to be having a bond, and all this sort of stuff, I understand that the, uh, employees are being paid, so there's no problem, it's just a matter of getting this paperwork in place, and as, as I understand it, um, the, uh, attorney sent out, uh, correspondence to everybody, saying this has to be done before the budget is passed. Now, uh, are we not following what the attorney's saying, or are we just going to go on and approve these, uh, uh, job descriptions, or either, uh, the employment of these, uh, people without, um, being approved? Now, these, these, uh, these, uh, positions need to be approved, they have, they were illegally appointed, and I say that, and I've been saying that since 2017, why can't we just go on and, uh, do the ordinance and, and get this done, stuff done? It's illegal.
The answer to your question, I like, I like your choice of words, but illegal means that it is something that, uh, that was wrong.
Exactly.
I understand that, I, I don't know what position that you claim that was approved without, uh, the board.
Okay.
So, but...
I'm, I'm, I'm talking, I can give you specific, uh, positions, if you want that.
Trustee, trustee, I, I listened to you, I didn't say nothing, I, I listened to you, and I didn't say anything, I listened to everything you had to say, would you please give me the same?
Okay, go on.
No? Okay, thank you. So, what I'm trying, what we're trying to find out today, and you just made a statement, if you guys want to have a special meeting for that, or you don't want to have a meeting, and you just want to actually vote on the, or, uh, on the budget, I need to know that. I need to know if you want to forego this ordinance and vote on the budget, and set a date when you want to come and, and, and do that, I have no problem with that. So, what I'll do now, is go around and get a consensus, so it'll be on the record. So, I'm just asking, what we're, we're, we're in, trustee?
Yeah, you, you just can't ignore what the attorney's saying, that's what I'm saying, we need to follow their directions.
Madam, I'm just, madam, uh, we're in assembly, so therefore, it is, it is a, uh...
Out of order, it's now to the budget hearing.
We're still, we still call the board.
Do we need to clarify some stuff?
Everybody wants to talk, everybody wants to talk, okay, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to clarify something, and I apologize for intervening. I'm sorry. You're a village, you know, you can vote on things and not vote on things, very simple. Your village attorney made a recommendation, he thought that passing this budget without passing these ordinances first would not be the correct situation. You can still do so, it's just a recommendation from your attorney. My recommendation, we can get the ordinance here this week to the clerk as quickly as possible, if possible, if we have it in time to get it on the agenda, vote for the ordinance first, and vote for the budget if you wish. If that works for you, we can do whatever needs to get done, as long as there's enough time to, the clerk to have enough time to put it together, and to notify the public, make sure it's listed, and make sure that it's posted. If that's workable, we can move that forward, and then you can pass the budget. Or we can wait till the second week of October, and that can be passed on, I think it's the thirteenth. But that was just the advice of your attorney, that's what you pay your attorneys for. If you want to follow the advice, that's always a good, very good idea, but that's not a mandate, it's a recommendation from your attorney, where he thinks he views the law as. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Attorney, so, I, I understand that, but the way it was worded, it seemed as if, that we didn't pass the ordinance first before the budget, that we were in violation of the criminal code, that's what it sounded like to me.
That's correct.
So, however, but I still don't understand is, you know, sixty-three years we've been a board, and we've never, well, I, I can't, but, 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 as long as I know, we've never had to have an ordinance in place, so I don't understand why it's such a big deal right now, so I feel like it can wait. However, we never discussed, because I, I saw three or four different ordinances that would need to be presented, we never discussed which three, or which, which positions need to have ordinance, because I'm hearing that, I'm hearing, uh, everybody, so like, as a board, as a body, we never discussed that, so I think we need to take that consideration first, before we set up something to the clerk and say, hey, put this together, because I don't want to get to the meeting on Tuesday, or whatever it may be, because this court, according to what positions we have ordinance and we don't have ordinance for. So, I feel like we should just, just wait, because I mean, obviously, this is a public hearing, and just wait till the next meeting, or, or sometimes even go to you and the board and the mayor later, but we, we have a chance to figure out as a board for a, for the business next step.
Okay, um, this is what I did the whole hour, um, I'll ask for a consensus to have to with, with, just, in other words, to not have a, a ordinance, and have a vote for the budget, uh, next week. Next Tuesday probably be, that's the flag of the Tuesday, to have a, to have a, uh, special meeting for the, for the, uh, complication of the, of the budget. So, I'll ask for a consensus, if that's okay to do that, and, um, the ordinances, the ordinance, which, I never got an answer from the lawyers in regards to that. I'll start, trustee Williams, yes or no?
No, because I think your attorney's coming here today, and we need more clarification, this was not discussed, I thought the budget would be a public hearing, I thought the budget would be at the public hearing for approval, and if there was a reason why we weren't going to vote on it, that's when this discussion should have taken place. No, I'm not in favor of not having an ordinance, because I want to hear from the, the lawyer, why is this maybe necessary? But I said, you've had a finance director for sixty, for years, you could have passed the budget, done the paperwork later, but I understand there's some positions that were created without an ordinance or approval of the board, they may be something we need to consider, so, no, I'm not going to say no.
I, I know you guys keep saying that there was positions created...
I'm not going to say no to no ordinance, because I need more clarification.
Okay, so that's what you, okay, but you guys, you just, you specifically stated, you specifically stated that we can pass ordinance later, but I'm moving through.
I, I would have loved to have passed the budget today, and done the paperwork later, but now, we have to have another meeting anyway, so let's find out what we need, and then we can pass the budget next week.
Okay, so then, I, I'll, then I'll, okay, so you're not in favor of having a meeting next Tuesday, correct?
I am in favor of having a meeting next Tuesday, along with the reason why we need an ordinance, what ordinance do we need, and to actually discuss it as a board, because apparently, there's been discussion that some of the ordinance are not aware of, I was ready to pass the budget today.
Well, there was nothing on there to pass, there was no, there was no...
Without passing the budget.
There was nothing on either, either, either agenda stating that we were passing the budget. I didn't say that, I said there was nothing on there, there was nothing said. Trustee Bell.
Trustee.
Trustee Bell.
All right, you go through with the budget and pass the ordinance then.
Okay, trustee Grant.
I'm, I'm in favor of having a meeting Tuesday, but I would, I would like that.
So, you're in favor of having a meeting Tuesday and not pass, and not, and discussing, and then pass the budget later that day, because...
Passing, passing the budget on Tuesday, knowing the ordinances at a later date, I'd like to hear Mr. Grant today.
Wait a minute, you said you're, okay, so you, I just want to make sure I got this correct, you want to have a meeting Tuesday to pass the budget, but have the ordinances passed that a later date?
Correct, unless...
Okay. Trustee Ty.
I agree, trustee Grant, have a meeting on Tuesday, pass the budget, have another meeting to discuss the ordinance.
Trustee Brew.
I, I think the, I'm sorry, I think the attorney should be able to clear up any, uh, information that we might need today, and that if he clears up whatever we need today, then we could have the budget passed on Tuesday, you know, this is before, well, you know what, this whole thing is confusing, you know? Well, you know what, I, you know what, I would rather have the ordinances passed, because if we violate the Illinois state statutes, and we're not even compliant, I would rather have the ordinances passed, and we can do them all in the same day, you know, so, why don't we just do them all on the same day, but we just need some clarity on, on the ordinances, because it shouldn't be that many that we have to do.
We have to, we have to put a, a agenda together based on what we just said, and what you just...
Well, but I just said, what I, well, you know, because everybody's confused about this, I think we need some clarity today, on the agenda for Tuesday, pass the ordinances, then pass the budget, that's it.
So, are you in agreement to passing the budget on Tuesday, or waiting until another time?
After the ordinances are done, we can do the ordinances on Tuesday, too.
Trustee Dezette.
Uh, I think we should have the meeting and pass the budget next Tuesday, these positions have been filled for years, so, I don't understand what the ordinances have to do with it, I think we can talk about that at a later date, definitely let's pass this budget.
Okay, so then I see is one, two, three, four, to, uh, from Tuesday to, uh, pass the budget, and do the ordinances that are later date. So, what we'll do is, we'll drive up an agenda for Tuesday, to pass the budget that we have in front of us, and, uh, even though the lawyer's going to come and discuss it, they'll come and clarify whatever is going to be done, uh, they can still do that within a later date, but I still like to see lawyers to say that we have to have an ordinance, we'll put it on the, we'll put it on the agenda. That being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Ty. All in favor? Motion to adjourn for ten minutes. Call meeting in order that stands for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would attend a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting of August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, so.
Second.
Move by trustee Bell, second by trustee Ty, any questions?
You know, Mr. Mayor, are we, is we supposed to live in the executive session?
Use the microphone, please.
Are we supposed to be going into the exact session?
I didn't hear anybody changing or, uh, different questions, but that's why.
Well, you, you didn't motion it, so, um, yeah, I'm just going to go.
All right, I may move on to the executive session, let me get through the motion as I'm going.
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Trustee Brew?
Yes.
Motion carried, while I still have, I'll just go to have a meeting, then I'll go back, motion to approve the proceeding for the committee meeting of the whole for September first, twenty twenty.
Second.
The move, the, the move, trustee Ty, second by trustee Dezette, are there any questions?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Brew?
Yes.
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Trustee Brew?
Yes.
Motion is carried, I'll attempt a motion to go into recess, um, I guess it would be, I'm sorry, to go into recess, into executive session, for the purpose of, uh, pending litigation, and, uh, I guess collective bargaining matters, and personnel matters.
So...
Move by trustee Brew, second by trustee Arwin, any questions?
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Trustee Brew?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Trustee Brew?
Yes.
Trustee Dezette?
Yes.
Motion carried, we'll be back, huh?
Yes.
Anthony, take the question?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll be back, huh?
Yes.
Anthony, take the question.
Yes.
Okay, I will accept the motion to review main. So.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Zensky. That is going to take color off.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Here.
Trustee Zensky?
Here.
Trustee Hill?
Yes.
Is carried, uh, public comment. All person to comment must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker is allowed an opportunity, one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may engage in debate, counter protest, or rebuttal. Come up, please, state your name. I move in a long, since we have a lot. Next one, report of officers. The mayor's report. Um, this Saturday at approximately five o'clock, uh, all the way to around 10:15, Saturday, we're going to have the evening out. Uh, in, in Salt Village, Angel Corn and Dog Roast for the twist. We're going to have movie under the stars. It's going to be like a drive-in, uh, movie type setting. Uh, the, uh, corn and dog roast will start at around five o'clock in the evening. And, uh, after that, we're going to have the movie. And you'll be driving your cars, you'll be in, you'll be in, uh, social distancing inside your car. Your speaker will be the speaker in your car, so you'll be able to, um, I guess it's a wifi type thing or Bluetooth mechanism that you'll be able to hear through your car speakers. So therefore, the distancing, uh, you won't be outside. Uh, you'll be inside your car, hopefully. Uh, and then, uh, we're trying to work and see if we're going to have any speakers outside for those that, that know, for those that don't. And sit there, it'll be so far back, it'll be kind of far, far back. So if you know anyone that, that's going to be coming to this, please ask them to drive to the, uh, the drive-in. It's going to be like a drive-in, if you want to. But now the corn and dog roast will start at five. And, uh, those that have never been there, we cook the corn. We cook the corn and, uh, you know, serve it right there. The hot dogs will be, you know, served, then we'll have a pop of water, um, and chips for sale. And we'll have a DJ. Uh, I was trying to get a boxy house, but then I was told that, uh, which makes sense that it's a sanitary process. And with the COVID, you've got to clean out every time, so what we'll do, so before I forego that, I said, okay, that's all right, we'll just have music. Uh, with, there's going to be, uh, census will be out there and voter registration tables will be out there also for, uh, people that, uh, hopefully, people that haven't filled the census out, uh, will be there. And then, uh, voter registration, those that haven't been registered yet can come out and, uh, make a difference in voting. Uh, the next thing is the census. Uh, I talked to a clerk, the death rate were like sixty percent. So, and, uh, please, guys, we, if this is anyone here, there's, uh, we have to do this money. And this money, we're going to lose around forty, fifty, hundred dollars per year per person. And that counted, and that's what we'll lose for the next ten years, for the next census, the next ten years. So I'm hoping that we can, uh, hopefully get a bad rush in. But I would like to get a little bump from sixty percent to ninety percent. Because I hate to keep money or put money on the table or leave money on the table and not be able to get it. So we need to get our friends, families, whoever it is that has, and I just asked them, have you, have you filled out the census yet? If they say no, please have them come upstairs. Between five and ten. And, or between five and eight. You want me to see after nine and ten. Between five and eight, come out and fill the census out. But we need all, everyone in the village to, uh, fill that out. And that being said, uh, next item is, uh, now the word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I truly appreciate your appeal and help on behalf of the census because we are lacking considerably. And we have basically one and a half more weeks in order to really do a push so that our numbers can increase. What I'd like to talk to you about today also is today was the first day that individuals who are interested in running for the municipal office in the year 2021 could pass their petitions. And I took the liberty of making liberty copies of the entire candidate's guide for those who are interested in running, um, or being a candidate. But then I also, the book is confusing. And it says one thing, then it says another, then it says another. So what I've done was I consolidated the large sixty-six page manual and I'm presenting candidates this little sheet here, this little packet here. And in this packet, it basically provides the forms that they would need, why they would be recorded, and all of that information, just to give you some information. We also updated the website, and this information is on the website as well, so that people can go to the website, download the digital forms, or if you know how to change the PDF and convert it to a Word and you know how to edit it, then you can type up your petitions, write them, to write it out and everything. Speaking of the website, we have a couple of departments who have endeavored to update their websites. And I'm going to invite you just to visit our website. I mean, it's still not pristine and very best, but I think that the fire chief and the police chief, that kind of gentleman's job in terms of updating their piece of our world. And so I'd like you to go and visit there as well. Mayor mentioned, uh, the corn and dog roast in the world here. And I know that trustees do know that I've been sending out messages to you with letting you know how much it costs. We ended up going with a different vendor because we did not raise as much as how the first one intended. But just know that because of charity and the vendors, in fact, we have I've been through who helped us to collect three thousand dollars. And so, I mean, um, that's really, really, really impressive. And I would like to. Want to, but that was really lacking. No enthusiasm at all. But you know what, if not too late, if you feel that, you know, you missed an opportunity, please be honest with us. And I will, you know, accept that from you. And, uh, Selena, that completes my report.
Thank you. Um, village attorney, Mike Grant.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, over.
Okay, village engineer, Mr. Jip Zarnik. I think there's a mic right there. Matter of fact, uh, you guys could use the other mic. Village Board. Oh, he's got one over there.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give an update on the I-394 water main replacement project. The boring under I-394 was finished earlier last week. Contractor completed the water main connection piece of the highway. The contractor also installed the remainder of the construction of west of I-394 this week. Pressure testing is also complete. Remaining work is hub caps, coordination, abandonment of the old water main under, including that under I-394, and restoration. And the project construction is on schedule. I'd like to report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Village administrator, Jerry Hurkies.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a wonderful opportunity last week, and I'm not sure if you noticed him in the back of the village board meeting last week. There was a gentleman back there named Kevin Popey. And Kevin grew up in Salt Village, you know Kevin. He has some wonderful ideas, has a lot of enthusiasm. He's asked, if possible, to address our committee on the first Tuesday of the month. And he has some interesting ideas about economic development, on solar energy, and about, uh, supporting the Salt Village show. Uh, I think that's going to be important. But Kevin was a really outgoing, personally, you know, man and back of all that's meeting. And I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to meet him and see what he has to say. Last week, the attorney and I were able to meet with, uh, Public Works Employee Union. And we had talked about the larger projects that we've talked to in the committee. But we also had a chance to discuss the grievance issue that we've had with the Public Works and to correct these issues and possibly move forward. In our last committee meeting, uh, we discussed the cable franchise contract. And there were some questions about, uh, cable costs and implementation. Not for residents, but for actually village youths. Uh, I had four of those answers to the mayor. And if possible, uh, the cable company, as well as our attorney, advanced if we can get this on our next board agenda in October for approval or question for discussion. And then, um, a couple of weeks ago, we had asked this board about the possibility of going out for bid for our neighborhood service inspectors. And we talked about it a little bit at committee meeting and it went up the tracks. But what we wanted to do is put a new RFP out for our inspection services as a whole. So I recently received those, um, I made some small changes. My attorney has reviewed them, and I'd like to get them out from the court to the board for your approval or for your opportunity to look at them and make any changes that you think is necessary. And then we can set that over in the discussion on that also. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, um, the, um, cable company, are they coming up for, you said, for answers? I mean, questions, in other words, before we plan the contract? Can we at least, you know, discuss it with them before we do that?
Sure. I'd like them to come out to our next committee meeting and answer questions from the board.
We can put them on, we can put them on the agenda for next debate.
They're, they're, they're third person talking, so.
Uh, maybe four, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, treasurer's report, we have here. The Finance and Administration Director, Sarah Worsley.
Good, good evening, everyone. Um, I have a treasurer's report on cash balances as of 9/17/2020. Total available cash for operations was $2,767,118. Corporate account was $226,611. Reserve account was $819,000. Water and sewer was $918,962. Water sewer easy pay account was $296,941. The senior center account, $5,604. The line of credit is still at $500,000. And the restricted funds, total cash for use is $1,449,613. The C and account has $142,519. The BEA account has $154,905. The SP housing account, $1,428. Tiff one and four, $573, $271. The total account, $13,769. The holding money monitoring account, $18,244. Spending drug account, $24,292. Indian money monitoring, $899. And the motor fuel tax account, $520,000. $520,286. And that concludes, uh, the cash balance as of 9/17/2020. My report as finance director for the village. The finance department is requesting approval of payroll benefits in the amount of $1,448,953.90 for the payday of 9/11/2020. The county's payable register dated 9/22/2020 in the amount of $218,914.83. The forensic audit and independent audit under the supervision of the interim finance director, the treasurer, is progressing. I had the opportunity to sit with the director of community development and review the application for the CARES Act COVID-19 relief grant. We sent in a letter of intent and accompanying documents to the county on 9/18/20. The total amount that we are eligible for has been finalized in the amount of $587,027.95. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, Fire Department, Fire Chief, Captain Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fire Department responded to, uh, eighty-four call for the service period of September 4th, 2020 through September 17th, 2020. There was one call for a possible structure fire, which turned out to be a false alarm. Um, I do want to encourage everybody, as the weather starts to change, uh, we remind you to be cautious while driving and walking uh, around the wet leaves because it can be very slippery. Also, be aware of, as we begin, as the weather begins to change and it gets cold, make sure we change that and check in our furnaces and our filters. And, um, if anyone needs, uh, smoke protectors or anything like that, if you know anyone, we have about ten of them at the firehouse that we can give out to the public. Uh, we just want to make sure that everyone is, uh, safe as we switch in seasons. Uh, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Police Department Chief, Alton White.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. Um, a calls for service report for the, uh, last period, the last two weeks from, uh, September 8th through September 22nd, the police department responded to more than four hundred and twenty calls for service. Uh, during that same time period, officers made, uh, eleven arrests. I'm going to bring attention to, if you get a chance to pass by the police department on the west side of the building, um, you'll see a new sign, uh, just under the childcare sign. Uh, it's the internet purch, it's the internet purchase exchange location. With the assistance of the Public Works Department, the Salt Village Police Department has posted as an official internet purchase exchange location. In recent months, more Americans have taken advantage of shopping via internet. Many other purchases involve monetary transactions between private citizens. The police department has encouraged and also all residents to conduct these type of transactions safely at the police station where surveillance cameras can capture images of all involved parties. This safe zone does not require that an officer be present for the interaction, but will obviously deter criminal activity. Again, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that was my report.
Thank you, Chief. The next report, um, I'll read is from, um, Allen Barrett, the, uh, as the director. It says, "Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the trustee residents of Salt Village. EMV response to three calls for service as of today's date. Uh, auto accident at 17:09 at Salt Trail, possible structure fire 208 Ark Lane, and a medical call in 9:07 Lower Lane." Uh, thank you, Mayor, for that, and for the trustee residents of Salt Village District. that was my report, Allen and E M B Director." Public Works, uh, Director Kevin Well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as of nine eight to nine twenty-two, um, staff's been out cutting grass, still trying to slow down a little bit, hopefully with the weather and the change in season here, but ten out of forty-nine locations, village owner locations were cut. Uh, branches from storm and regular pickup had to be out by nine thirteen to be picked up. The chipper will be out making its final pass. All piles have to be pulled to the parkway to pick up. The next pickup will be in May of twenty-one, so if anybody is putting out after-bye, the tune goes back. Um, boom truck we used for, uh, cutting branches and streetlight repairs, um, we had an electrical problem on that, we had to repair it, uh, that is back in service, and I let the resident know if they have any branches that they notice in the trees that are browned up or are in late fall, please give us a call, I'm hoping to cut them out of the trees. Also, Public Works staff has made several streetlight repairs, um, seventeen eighteen Carol Lane, damaged wire, fall repaired, have repaired seven streetlights. Um, two two three four eight Nichols Drive, damaged wire due to a Julie call, uh, resident did not call for a Julie locate, they put their fencing, they had a wire underground. That light is working currently right now. Twenty-one fifty to eighteen place, a photo cell at the top of the light was not working, has been back repaired. Twenty-nine thirty-seven Peach Street, storm damaged wire, um, was pulled down during the storm, branches fell on the wire, uh, that has been put back up and repaired. Two two four one two hundred and twenty-first, again, storm damage, uh, tree fell, ripped down the wire, that wire has been repaired. Two sixteen oh six Charlotte Court, uh, the light pulled, the arm was ripped off, a pole during the storm, and the light head was destroyed, has been put back up, and that light is back in service. And the final light was eighteen thirty-nine, two hundred and twenty-second Street, damaged wire, um, same thing from the storm, was the, the bad wire got pulled loose, uh, that was repaired, and that was back in service. That was pulled, thirteen streetlights back in service. Um, next, uh, subject is re, uh, reeval water meters, uh, for September was completed, uh, we're about a day behind, we still got it completed by the end of the week. Um, all customer service, all water complaints and appointments, uh, are being addressed, so if any resident has a complaint about anything to do with the water inside the house, you just need to make an appointment with the, uh, front desk or the, uh, customer service person to come out, take a look and see what's going on. Uh, we've been discussing for the last month about an EZ valve that we have to insert, um, the vendor right now is behind at work, so they pushed us off again. They're telling me by the end of the week, they'll have a date for me, um, to put that EZ valve in. It's EZ, EZ valve what it is, is a valve that's installed under pressure, it won't disrupt service, but this will make it easier for us to cut out an oil with fire hydrant that was damaged years ago on Yaleen and two seventeen. Um, when we're doing this, we're also going to replace the main section with a brand-new valve, uh, this will assist us in any other repairs for water main valves and pipe. Um, staff dug and straightened a V box at two two four seven seventy-eight, uh, so residents could do a repair. Um, staff has also helped the Fire Department, Police Department, and Bill's Hall with Miss Lane's work, with vehicle maintenance, plumbing, lighting, HVAC, made a few. And final thing, the Public Works is still accepting applications, apply online. So good, my report.
Okay, uh, when you get through with that, did you give a copy to the board? Oh, she's got one? All right, now, through the development, uh, we're gonna through the development director's report. Uh, Inter-Community Development Director's report is set to the twenty-second, uh, September fourteenth, met with Kenneth Olden from Bring Home Experts, who is interested in visiting the board for on offering free LED lights through the combat energy efficiency initiative. Have been selecting tenants from strong community autograph that we can go after to acquire and move to investors, to move to investors and, and add a few that we can rehab on our own. We've submitted our notice of intent to the county for our allotment portion of the coronavirus relief fund in the amount of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand twenty-seven dollars ninety-five cents. I have been working closely with the Finance Director, Michelle Royster, and the administration team to go over receipts and payroll data to finalize the narrative for this application. Have a, have a presentation date for the Homes for a Changing Region Report scheduled with Jerry Edmire Maggie Jar on Tuesday, September twenty-second, from two to three P M. Over the last year, the village has been working with the Metropolitan Planning Council, C M A, and I A to develop a Homes for a Changing Region Report, which would help the village focus on next steps to address some of our pressing housing challenges. The report was recently finalized and can be emailed to anyone who is interested in reading it. Uh, met with George Novak and Bill Wrangell from Saveville, and our street lighting, our procedures to become more efficient and effective without permitting inspections and reporting together. And that concludes the report for Anthony, Antonio. Next item reports that, uh, Trustee Standing Committee, uh, Public Safety Committee, Trustee Gary Dale.
No, I'm waiting.
Okay, Public Service Committee, Trustee Philip Rule.
No, I'm working.
Uh, Budget and Finance Committee, Trustee Roger Gray.
Thank you, Mayor, no work.
Okay, Housing and Living Governmental Relations Committee, Trustee Sherry Diszinski.
No, I'm working.
Okay, Ordinance Review Committee, Trustee Linda Todd.
No, I'm working.
Public Defense, uh, Community Trustee Never Wait.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to report that the Saturday food box distribution that the South Village Public Events Committee has been doing for many Saturdays over the past few months is unfortunately, um, on hold right now. Uh, the state of Illinois did not receive an allotment from the USDA, which is very disappointing. Other states didn't receive that allotment, but we are looking for other sources in order to get those free food boxes to continue. So until further notice, the South Village Public Events Committee will not be doing food boxes on Saturday. However, the Southland Voice has reached out to their distributor where they get food boxes through the week, and this Saturday, they were able to secure the food boxes for about eight o'clock on Saturday at the Steger Kmart. At seven o'clock, they will have electronic recycling with unlimited recycling of electronics, including unlimited amount of TVs, which is very unusual because usually when there's an electronic recycling, they only take one TV. Well, first come, first served, you can turn in as many electronics and TVs as you like, and if you are a person who is recycling, you get choice for the food boxes first, so because there's a limited amount of food boxes. So Southland Voice has their Saturday distributions, they may have other distributors to deal with. The South Village Public Events Committee normally does the first serve and fifth Saturday if there is a fifth Saturday, so we're still looking for other distributors to work with us, so, um, I'm sure I will be able to find somebody. And lastly, the blood drive that was canceled in August, they have contacted me and asked me if we could set it up for October twenty-fourth in the Senior Center. Well, I'll be talking to, um, the Senior Center Director there about that date, and they also asked if we would include Bloom Trail High School, who is looking to do some blood drives as well, and to see if we could combine. Due to COVID, they have, uh, issues having it within their school, so we are looking to do a blood drive on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, from nine A M. to one P M., and we really could use your support on that. This is the time where blood is really, really necessary, a lot of people are not donating right now, but a lot of people are in need right now. So if you have any questions on the blood drive, please feel free to give me a call. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Senior Advisory Committee, uh, Chairman Ingrid Rock.
Uh, Mayor, trustees. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is Thursday, October eighth, at five P M., all are welcome. It will be a virtual, uh, meeting on Zoom. The link will be posted two days before on our South Village Senior Center information page. Also, this Thursday, September twenty-fourth, at nine A M., the Senior Advisory Council has a senior walk. We are leaving behind a good call, and we'll walk in for about an hour round in the vicinity. Come out and join us, and be sure to wear your mask, also social distancing rules will apply. And that concludes, uh, my report.
Thank you. In business. I'll entertain a motion to approve the payroll, and the council payroll dispersment in the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. So, the move by Trustee Dale, second by Trustee Williams, any questions? Senator, please call.
Trustee Harris, yes. Trustee Williams, yes.
Trustee Moore, first name? Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Diszinski?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance, amending Article two of the Police Department of Chapter forty-two of Law Enforcement of the Municipal Code for South District to advise for lateral hiring of police officers. Move.
Second.
The move by Trustee Dale, second by Trustee Diszinski. Any questions?
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Dale?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Diszinski?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation to award a contract, be it for the Tiff Resurfacing Project for the low bidder deconstruction in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Trustee, you left the morning, you're probably a little drunk, and not too much, because this is under.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, okay, I, I, I said it, I said it.
I know.
But on the, uh, on the, uh, I guess on the gentleman that you got that said, um, twenty, twenty-first call was replaced, and it's not, it's the two, it's the, uh, resurfacing at some point, right, correct, the surf, resurfacing of, uh, uh, for the Tiff project over in, uh, over in Tiff three, I think it's Tiff three and two and three. Any questions? Senator.
Trustee Dale?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Diszinski?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance to amend the ordinance for the municipal motor fuel tax in the village of South Village.
Second.
Move by Trustee Taylor, second by Trustee Diszinski, any questions? Senator.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Diszinski?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion carried. Questions, I'm sorry, questions, I'm, I'm, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning. Canvas from the, uh, more Trustee, I'll start with Trustee Lee.
I have no comments.
Okay, Trustee, uh, Dale.
I have.
Trustee Grant?
Brewer.
Trustee Todd?
No comment.
Trustee Brewer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hopeful that, uh, we'll be able to pass a budget on, uh, Tuesday, and we get all the ordinance in place, so we won't have to go through these changes every year, make sure that this stuff is legal and right, so I'm hoping everything will be ready for Tuesday, so we can go on and prove budget. That's the end of my comment.
Trustee Diszinski?
No comment.
Thank you. Uh, just wanted to reiterate, please, guys, come out and, um, uh, pack your nice, tell your friends to come out, pack your nice corners of all roads. It's been a while, and we've been in the house with COVID, and, um, so I'm trying to make it as safe as possible. Please, wear your mask, anybody that comes out, please, wear your mask, you know, but come out and try to have fun, I mean, come out and enjoy yourselves today. On the street, as I said before, it's gonna be, uh, uh, black panther, when you get a little, anyway, uh, just come out and enjoy yourselves, come out and have fun, invite your friends, invite the family, invite your neighbors. And that's all that I have to say, I'll, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Move. Move by Trustee Dale, second by Trustee, for you, for all the favor. Motion carried.